Okay.
Okay, got seven.
Yep. Right, I'd like to call the order of the committee of the whole meeting for August 12th, 2025. First item on our agenda this evening is roll call.
Barazza.
Here.
Lancy.
Here.
Back.
Here.
Malone.
Here.
Oh, Malay.
Here.
Soffa.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Lohman.
Here.
Peeper. Aaron Back.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Vocal singer. Okay, that's 12.
We have the necessary quorum. And item two is a reminder to please speak into the microphone if you come up, just adjust it for height however you would like it. So that gets on the recording. Item three is items to be removed, added or changed. Do we have anything?
No.
Okay. Move on to item four, which is matters from the public for things that are not on the agenda tonight. Is anybody here for that? Okay, nothing on lock. What are the consent agenda? Want to do it one more week or? Jen, is it Jen's turn now? I know we didn't vote on those, but I think we picked them, so.
I don't know what the formal process is.
If you would like to read them.
You're listening to the website.
Yeah, you just get to drop in right now.
Website official.
That doesn't buy fire. Want my sheet to read out?
No, it's the first part that says, uh, the first part that I'm not sure really what to say, but the consent agenda reads as follows. Approval for the minutes of July 21st, 2025, special meeting and July 29th, 2025. Resolution 2025-101-R, variation to the subdivision regulations. City code title 11 for 947 Britta Lane. Nathan Jankey, applicant. Ordinance 2025-039, changing the name of Lockwood Court to Jefferson Court. Your Honor, I...
Moved to approve the consent agenda as follows.
Moved to approve the consent agenda as read.
I'll second, but I also have a comment as to ordinance 2539 in that I grew up in Jefferson Court and apparently my life has been a lie because it was called... It was called lie, it's been known as Lockwood Court for all this time. So I am definitely wanting this to be changed so that I...
And we do have a lot of...
I can set the record straight as to where I grew up.
I believe you have Lockwood Court as well.
It's right over, it's right over there by my grandma's house, over there off a mill view.
In the middle of Lockwood.
Yeah. I second.
Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries, 12 to nothing. All right then, on our regular agenda this evening, item 6.1 is a public hearing for TIF number four, tenure report. I'll open the public hearing.
Good evening. This is a required tenure report for TIF number four, which was created about 10 years ago. So we are required in the first 10 years of a TIF to have a tenure report. We did this for TIF three, I believe, a few years back to do the same thing. So there are certain requirements that we are mandated to do with the statute in regards to information that is provided. Then a public hearing has to be held in order to review the information. If the public has any questions, comments, they can make that at this, at this public hearing. So we have attached as part of the staff report, the tenure report, which outlines the general revenue that is generated within the project area, that the, it also outlines the expenditures that have been made in the TIF, in that TIF area during, during the first 10 years. There is also a, the status of the planned goals for the TIF and where we are going. In particular, this one, we're having a large water main project is our future expenditure. We have not had much in the way of expenditures in this TIF. The, there is one grant that was, that's still paying out on a property that was renovated. That's the only other real expenditure we've had, but most of the monies that are there are going to be expensed on this water main improvement. Then it also talks about the amount of public and private investment within the redevelopment area, which is in Exhibit D that's attached, and then other just in general information about that, about the TIF district. So we provided this information to you and posted it. If you have any questions or concerns or anything, let me know. If anybody in the public.
Yeah, I've got just a few comments and a question real quick. First off, I, I kind of love that area of town. I'm not going to lie with you. It's sort of such a unique sort of light industrial weird little corner. There's that great little antique shop that's there. I suggest people stop in. Now, but looking over kind of this report, it's a little disappointing, I think. And I'm sort of wondering, can you tell us a little bit about how will this water main project help us unblight some of the sort of rundown properties and maybe, maybe begin to flip that neighborhood?
Right, well, the hope, the hope with the water main project is that we have some properties that actually aren't on any water right now. And because of the size of the, of the projects or the buildings that are there, the, the water main that is in the area is undersized anyway. So the water main improvement would put in a standard water main size for that area and it would allow for, you know, adequate fire flows and capacity for the, the actual buildings that are there. So hopefully that will spur some additional development. We do have one property on the east side of Mallory, for example, that has been, we've been working with them to try and, you know, work on some of the development issues that are out there right now, and hopefully that'll be coming forward in the not too distant future. But, you know, that's, that's, that's the one major project. Part of the issue is that when we created this TIF, you know, 10 years ago, we had thought that there was going to be more either redevelopment of the area along Main Street or that the southern end where there's the old nursery, that that would develop into town home, single family or something like that. That would have created additional increment where we could spend, you know, doing some additional streetscape or other, other improvements that we usually do as part of a TIF at the beginning of a TIF. But, you know, nothing materialized, so we didn't really see a lot of revenue generated from the TIF unfortunately. The school district also did buy some property in there, took it off the tax rolls, so that also didn't help as well, so.
Karen?
Yeah, you know, just to follow on, Kevin, Kevin mentioned, it is an equal area. It, it used to be the outskirts of town, so that's why it was originally industrial. My, my question really is, I know we've had some movement there, meaning I know the old candle factory that burned down, somebody went ahead and bought it and they tried to rehab it, or they did rehab it, I mean, they, they shorted up, right? But it's, but it's been empty since they've done that, right? And this is for my education, because I truly don't know. Can TIF funds be used for like marketing and just making people aware of the properties that are there? Or is it?
You can use TIF funds for certain limited activities. I would have to review the TIF statute to see if that's exactly something you can use it for. You can use it to help subsidize renovation of properties, you can use it for streetscape. You can't use it to actually build new buildings. That's the one thing you definitely cannot use it for, but you can use it for rehab. So I know most of those buildings there are, you know, rehab worthy potentially, so. But I would have to look into that and see if that's something you can use it for. I mean, we use it for incentives, obviously, for facades and things like that, so.
Yeah, no, as Kevin mentioned, I mean, you, you tend to just drive through it and not realize what's really there. And I think a part of that has to do with just, quite frankly, you get blind to it.
Right.
And so it gets a little...
Just for a quick clarification, that was Master Cast, that was a casting foundry that was there.
It was a candle factory at one point.
Not, not that I'm aware of in my lifetime.
It was a foundry that burned down, so it was a foundry.
The one on the corner that's a green lot, they do not want to sell because of the environmental cleanup on it. They just want to leave it as a green lot. And that's direct, I believe, from Master Cast about five years ago that that was their test. Because I know somebody's been trying to buy up all the property over there, so.
And isn't that the other building, Doo's old place?
Yeah, and that's just a shell of a building. It has no water, no electricity in it, and priced probably double what it's worth because of the amount of money you would have to spend to even use it as a warehouse or anything else. It has to have a fire suppression system put in it and the electric and water feed to it.
That is the one project that we do have a developer who's...
He is planning to move forward with that now, or?
No, that's, they've been planning to, it's just a matter of, you know, trying to work out the details on it, so. But they are, they are looking to redevelop that, yes.
Okay. Your Honor?
Yeah, just to give the council a little history lesson, there's some very unique moments on that history of that property. Probably the biggest one is that the three, I would, somebody who kind of has followed this all his life, the three largest fires we've ever had in the city of Batavia have been on that property. We, we burned down Lingren's Foundry in 1953, and that was when it was kind of the last thing in town out there, and there wasn't the water system that he was talking about. Then, I don't know, 15, 20 years ago, when Master Cast was in there, they got a good fire going and then the sprinkler didn't work and there was a whole bunch, and they burned down half the buildings that were there. And then probably the biggest fire we've ever had in town was in 1934, and it was at the other end of the block there along Main Street and First Street. And if you go today and look at the houses that are sitting there, those are all new houses after the fire because it got started, there was a lumberyard there at the east end, and that got going, and then it spread to the houses, and then it spread to the foundry. So everything there has been kind of replaced three different times. And, you know, every time we did it, it was before most of the codes and there wasn't the water systems, there wasn't the sprinklers. And this last fire we did have, we made them put a sprinkler into the rest of that building, I believe.
They will. They haven't yet. Are you talking about the, the, pardon? The east side, the east side of, of Mallory?
Yeah.
Yeah, they will be doing that as part of any rehab.
So I mean, there has been some improvements, but that, that area, that block has had a real troubling history in Batavia because it's burned down three times.
Well, you know, when we market that area, might keep that off.
Not talk about that. You know, I'd, I'd be really hopeful that if somebody goes to develop that and they can talk Master Cast into selling that, one of the things that's always in the TIF is you can have the cleanup.
Yes.
You know, so that to me makes a lot of sense to try to do that. Okay.
I just have one comment from probably a resident in my ward. When they saw the notification come out in the paper, they were looking for the document right away, so I don't know if there's some way where that document can be ready when that advertisement goes into the paper or that... Is it the advertisement or notification?
Yeah, it was, it was a legal notice, it was the newspaper.
Yeah.
So, so the legal notice, we did have it at our front counter when we did publish it, in which we say in the notice that it's there. We did also post it, but it was, it did get posted as soon as it got published. So there was a little delay, I guess, for that, so.
Yeah, if, if we could maybe just like close that in a little bit, because I was frantically looking all over for and couldn't find it, and so that, that would only be my feedback from that.
Sure.
Good. Else? Need a motion to close the public hearing? Okay. Motion by Soffa, second by Malay, to close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed. Should I ask too, anybody want to talk about it in the audience? I don't think so, so I think I'm good there. Okay, then we will move on to 6.2, which is an approval for the city to display the suicide prevention awareness flag for the month of September 2025. Hold on, Aaron Back.
Yeah, so back in June, so being aware that September is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, back in June, I reached out to the Suicide Prevention Services, which is a local non-for-profit charity, was founded in 1998 over on, their main office in South Batavia Avenue. And quite frankly, I used to, I used to live near there, so that's how I got familiar with, with the organization. I think the mayor lived right, right there as well, for a while there. And quite frankly, they have a lot of local volunteers who I've gotten to know over the years. I just happen to live around them as well. And they are an amazing organization. They've, they man, I, I did send out a brief email kind of listing their services. They do everything from crisis intervention, they run a suicide crisis lifeline, they have a depression hotline, they do in-person counseling, they do peer support, they, they have support groups for both survivors of suicide attempts and their families, especially those who, the families of those who unfortunately have been lost, caregivers of attempt survivors, school board, school-based interventions, community workshops, depression screening, and they do all that at no cost. And the volunteers that they have, not many people out there are volunteering to man a hotline like that, right? And quite frankly, we have people who've been doing it for years around here. So, so given that we have the new opportunity to, you know, honor this locally based organization with displaying the flag, and given that they do have a logo that, you know, exists, you know, I felt it was appropriate to reach out to them for September because Suicide Awareness Month. We are going to have them in, in council sessions, talk about their organization, give you their, their awesome history, all the things that they've done over the years, and then hopefully we'll have a declaration tied around that as well. Yeah, and then, then we'll have the flag. So, and, and the flag itself physically is, is right over there. So that's it. They're, they're a great resource, they've not, they've been here for decades. I hope we can make this happen for them.
That's something that we've done in the past, we have done the proclamation for Suicide Awareness Month, had them in here so that they can talk about the services that they have available, give out the numbers and, you know, the website and everything so that way people are aware of that. I'm very aware of it, I lost an niece to suicide, and, you know, it's something that you don't see coming or you don't realize it's going to happen, and really wish there was more of these out there and that we talked about it more because that's the only way we can stop it or slow it down, is to make sure that, you know, after it happened to one of my daughter's friends in Batavia, we were at a meeting at the middle school and the speaker that came in said, what happens is there's how many doors or how many exits out of this room, and somebody that's ready to commit suicide sees one door, they never see the other ones. And if this is a way to make sure that they look and see the other doors and see there's another way to move forward, you know, another way out, that's something that we have to promote. I, I feel real strongly about that.
Something else to keep in mind is that the numbers are not reported. So they're not reported with the police numbers, not reported with, with the fire department numbers. Suicide is only reported at state level, and it is on the rise. And if you wanted to get the stats locally for Batavia, you have to file a request with the coroner, and even then you're going to get pushback, right? And I know this because we had somebody on my block who unfortunately was a victim of suicide, and I was expecting to see something in the paper for whatever reason, because I'd never had exposure to that at that close to me, my general area, and then there was nothing. And then, so then I started to research, hey, how is this reported? Then I realized it's not. So, so as a result, I mean, there is a real need for awareness because people may not realize it's, it's an embedded part of the community unfortunately, so.
Yeah, just as a follow-up to Alden Farinbach's comments, which I strongly appreciate and thank you for presenting that, when this was first brought to Batavia, I lived in Stone Manor, and my back door opened up right on basically their, kind of their front door. So I get, I used to be able to see all the time, and I knew many of the people who were going in to be volunteers, and it was a totally volunteer effort. I mean, there wasn't anybody, I don't think anybody was being paid for 10 or 15 years there, that it was all just people trying to do a nice thing and help people who were having moments of trouble. So this has been an outstanding organization, and I, as it's already been said, we don't know how successful they've been, but I would suggest they've been pretty successful in heading off a number of suicides. So I, I think it would be a very good honor for us to honor that flag and let us fly it for the month of it's been presented.
Yeah, you know, obviously an incredibly important topic here. Suicide has, I think, touched all of our lives in some way. I, I have some personal stories of how it's touched my life as well. And this organization in particular, my roommate and best man at my wedding was their volunteer coordinator for 10 years, got to know the organization extremely well, and it is here in Batavia, and it's been over in Stone Manor for a long time. It's also a national hotline, they take calls from all across the country, and the folks behind the phones are volunteers, and they are hearing terrible awful things, having conversations with people at the worst points in their life. And the fact that in Batavia, we have those types of people is inspiring, right? It's a really amazing, amazing thing. I guess my question would be, as we're sort of thinking of, of putting the flag up, I think of proclamation, it sounds like we do that in the past, and is of course a, an important step to do. I know that the suicide awareness campaign, national campaign, is, kind of has a teal purple color to it, they sort of have their own symbolism. And so I'm wondering, it's nice, you know, SPS is a wonderful organization and we can promote our homegrown folks, or is there maybe a more national symbol, something a little more recognizable to folks who aren't maybe familiar with SPS? I sort of don't know, is SPS sort of the right, the right flag to fly? And that's sort of an honest question, I can see it both ways. Support our local homegrown folks with their organization, or do we kind of tie into sort of the larger, you know, marketing awareness campaigns that are out there?
You know, I can, I can show the flag. There we go. So it is a logo, it is prominent as far as the awareness goes. Understanding there is a purple teal flag potentially, quite frankly, couldn't find it. It's the one that's appropriate for this. So it's custom made, and it is, it does pronounce, you know, the organization's name, it does men, and fortunately their name does align with the topic, right? So I think for the case of, for this year, I, I think this is the way to go. If in later years we decide, hey, we want to do a national flag, then we require a national flag.
I like the local tech, the local side of it, because if, you know, it inspires one, one more person to go and volunteer, or somebody to call it, you know, then it's successful. It just takes one.
I, I fully support the whole proclamation like we've done in the past and the, all the sentiment behind this. I mean, I would also point out that September is not only Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, it's also Pediatric Cancer Awareness Month. Go Gold for Pediatric Cancer, I mean, that's near and dear to my heart. Here's my point, where's that, there's another approval coming up right after this to do cancer awareness flag for month of October. We're going to start, we're going to start this slippery slope here with flags, and this is my concern, is that now we're going to, I mean, these are all great topics that we think need to be approved, set forth, promoted, but other people may have different views and what they think are great services, great topics, great awareness months for whatever the case may be. Like I said, I like Pediatric Cancer Awareness Month because that's more close and near and dear to my heart. So, you know, I just have no problems with proclamations and things in that regard as long as they're worded correctly, but I feel like we're going down a slippery slope with lots of flags. That's just my comment.
Kevin, your thought was exactly my thought when I saw that, because when I think of this and think long-term, as Chris brings up, this could begin starting unraveling where we're starting to get local organizations that want us to fly their flag. I think it's absolutely worthy and there's some way that, you know, we should definitely honor and, you know, partake in that. And I, I believe they even put out lumineers, and maybe we try to do a community luminaire where, you know, we do it as a fundraiser for them, where somebody can get a luminaire that they can put out on their porch at night in connection with the organization. I think that if we are looking at doing, you know, flags, it has to represent everybody and everywhere. And I don't know where, yes, they are, they do national calls, and that's where I keep going back and forth, but, you know, maybe we do something that is more recognizable for, you know, people that have been in that position with that. So, you know, those were my exact thoughts. So I, I was like sitting there going, how do I bring this up? So thanks, Kevin.
Go ahead.
So I guess I'll put my comments both on this one and then on the next one. They're both very admirable awarenesses. I mean, I've been impacted by both of them personally. With that being said, I believe the whole premise behind our flag policy was to make sure that it's not a public forum. And in my opinion, the only way to do that is to only fly three flags, City Batavia, State of Illinois, and United States of America flag. That's why I voted no in June when a similar flag thing came up, and I'll continue to vote for no and any flags being raised, so.
Yeah, sort of as, as I'm thinking on it, I, I would like to kind of hear from the SPS folks as well. You know, a flag is, is of course a symbolic gesture and, and at times an important one. But maybe there's, maybe there's a more impactful way the city can be engaged in, in this topic and other topics, pediatric, pediatric cancer, general cancer awareness, breast cancer awareness, you know, all the, you know, the different things. And I think it makes sense to be a little mindful of making sure we're sort of matching the messaging with the message, as it were. Maybe a flag is appropriate here, I don't know. I'd love to chat with the SPS folks about their general awareness campaigns, or maybe something else, but, you know, right now I think I would be leaning towards kind of tabling it until we kind of, you know, messaging is a big thing, right? It's a thing that they spend lots of money on and they really consider, and I don't want to be kind of intentional about that.
People have kind of taken the three points that I wrote down when I was trying to formulate my thoughts around this too, that as we approach our flag policy and we determine by majority vote what becomes government speech and what becomes, what flies on the flag pole, for me, the big one was kind of a universally recognized flag where there's no, you know, misconception, everyone, when you say the awareness piece, the image comes to mind, which for this one, when I first saw suicide prevention, a singular image didn't come to mind that I knew that I would recognize. Then once I saw the logo, I was like, oh, of course. But then that got me thinking about, you know, the singling out of a single business and the promotion of a single business. Nothing against their business or what they do, and I love that they're here. I work for a nonprofit, I would love that kind of exposure. I sit on the board of another nonprofit, I would love that exposure. But on the other hand, as to Jen's point, a flag doesn't reflect our marketing or our needs or the way that we build awareness that ties back to the work that we're doing, so a flag wouldn't be appropriate anyway. The Luminary is a perfect example for this one, and I think each, each cause, you know, I think when I think of cancer awareness, I think of ribbons, I think of ribbons tied around to show our support for different things and ribbon around the podium, you know, during certain months to celebrate those, those awareness days. So I'm, you know, it's nice to finally have to think through each of my votes that I'll do on each of these flag bring-ups, and I'm, I'm charting to chart out and jot down my process for how I'll evaluate them all each time. Those are the three points that I have so far, and appreciate the discussion so far.
So we were in contact with the, with the organization's lead as far as the flag went, and, and they did align on this flag. So, and they even went ahead and created a modified version of this. Unfortunately, the production of that flag didn't work out. You know, it, it really is what it is. This is a local-based organization, they've been around for decades. Fortunately, you know, we, we did run it by him and said, hey, if the flag's a bust, I will submit the proclamation, you know, and they know that. At some point, if, if we say, hey, we're only do like, you have to keep in mind, last year we did one flag, right? The whole year. What I would hate to do is have this, we just, we just say, hey, we're only doing one flag per year and that's it, right? Because what we're going to do is, is we're going to put ourselves in a situation where the question is, like, what is our policy, right? I, I mean, is the policy, okay, we just, we really just want to add a fourth flag to our, our flag polls once a month and then that's it? Or do we open it up to other stuff, right? This is a local-based charity, right? This is not a business, right? This is a local-based charity that is staffed by Batavia volunteers, mainly based in Batavia. They deal with thousands of, of people a year. When they're going to come here next time, I asked them specifically, you need to share the stats, number of calls, number of customers they're dealing with, as far as kind of like, you know, where they're located, the whole thing, right? So, so this is, so we're going to get a whole overview of the organization. I think, I think once that's done, you'll understand that this is a national movement, this is a, a endemic problem across, across our society, and it's worth, you know, doing something like this for them. But that being said, that, that's my two bits. I'll shut up about it.
This was all discussed rather extensively, like extensively, when we talked about generating the flag policy. There's actual case law out there. I mean, the courts have ruled as to what the definition is, that's why we created the policy, to be in line with case law. So these are my concerns. I, I think that we're going down too much of a slippery slope. I think a good idea would be to try to formulate some type of a, an idea where there could be like a wall somewhere for every month, there can be displays of whatever, you know, I mean, for instance, not only is it Suicide Prevention Month, but it's also, you could have a flag, Go Gold for Pediatric Cancer, it could be smaller like garden flags on a wall, you know, the city of... The City of Batavia recognizes, you know, the month of September and the following causes that, you know, are concerning to citizens. We start putting flags up on the flag polls, there's going to be people that are going to be sitting out here wanting their flags up too. And then it's going to cause lots of discussion. We're going to be accused of being bigoted one way or the other, being favored, you know, having favoritism one way or the other. I just think that...
Could you speak into the microphone?
I think that we are going to cause too many problems here because we have a gentleman out here who I'm sure is going to stand up and want to fly a flag as well. And so I totally get the wanting to raise awareness for various causes, various things that are promoted during various months, but I don't feel like being the person who's going to sit here and have to listen to, and I know it hasn't happened. I mean, like Alderman Farinbach said, we only really had one request last year, but it's just a matter of opening things up. And I think that we have the flag policy in place. I think we should follow it to the letter. I think we should follow what the courts and the case law are, that has been established out there, and think of a different way where we could recognize things such as Suicide Prevention Month, Pediatric Cancer Awareness Month, Sacred Heart of Jesus Month, whatever the case may be. It's my thought.
Yeah, I all echo some of what's been said, but, I mean, I've just thought since the beginning, this would be a slippery slope. I think the case law, I believe it's out of Boston, went to the Supreme Court in '22, I think points us in a direction of a slippery slope, right? If we, if we open this up. So my, my desire is for the city and this council to have an ordinance where we only fly government flags on our government flag polls. Totally agree with bringing awareness to major topics like these that have been brought up. There also needs to be mechanisms for us to not display some things, right? And, and, you know, if legal tells us that, nope, if you display one or two, you got to display all, and there can't be a vote about it or anything like that, unfortunately, that's the world we find ourselves in from a legal standpoint. So, you know, does that stink? Yes. But, you know, in that regard, I feel we are just not in a place to be the arbiter of anything but government and city speech. You know, not to say we aren't an inclusive city or that we don't, you know, support cancer awareness or anything like that. It just really comes down to, we need to, we need to be governing and not worrying about what special interest flags are being flown on flag polls. And I, I think at a certain point, it becomes a waste of our time in this room. So I will be a no vote on any flag that gets brought in front of us.
Anybody else? Anybody in the audience want to step up and talk about this one? Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, it's my first motion. I forgot the protocol. I've never...
The floor is yours?
Yeah, the floor is yours. So to bring it to a vote, let's go ahead and vote on this motion to fly the Suicide Prevention Flag, Batavia-based organization, for the month of September in recognition of Suicide Prevention Awareness Month.
Second.
Call, please.
Barazza.
No.
Nancy.
No.
Beck.
No.
Malley.
Aye.
Malone.
No.
Sulfah.
No.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
No.
Lehman.
No.
Lohman.
No.
Farinbach.
Aye.
Anderson.
No.
Vocal singer.
And peeper.
Okay. So that's 9.
11.
3 to 9.
Yeah.
Okay, so that motion fails. Would you like to make a motion to have the proclamation for Suicide Awareness Month at our, at our first meeting in September?
Yeah, you bet. So, you know, a motion there to have September proclaim Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and then we'll have the organization here in chambers to talk about the organization, all the great things they do for the city.
Second.
You can probably do a voice vote on that.
Yeah. I think we'll do a voice vote on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that one passes unanimously. And then we'll move on to item 63, which is approval for the city to display cancer awareness flag for the month of October. Want to come up and make your case, Bob? He brought this to me, sent me an email on it, and I responded that I would gladly do that, having, you know, had cancer and dealt with it, and a lot of my family and friends. And I guess what I'll say about it is, I feel like these things are somewhat universal in our community that the support is there for them. And, you know, I think what I've read of case law that's been out there and what cities have gone through is when they deny something, and it's, on the, on the denial side, I think it's much harder to prove a reason why you're going to deny it than allow it. I guess that's about all I have to say about the, the flag flying situation we have found ourselves in. Go ahead, Bob.
Okay. Thank you. Bob McQuillan, 465 Walcott Lane in Batavia. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. As Alderman Worf did say, that I did actually email the mayor and the entire city council requesting that October is the month, is the cancer awareness month, especially breast cancer, and that it would be appropriate for the city to fly a cancer flag of your choosing and at my expense during the month of October. And listened to some of the comments, actually listened to all the comments that we just said, and I found it interesting, some of the opinions of some people. I can't, I've got bad eyesight. I don't want to bring my cheaters out, but I don't know all of your names, but I did find the one comment about that the flag should really represent everyone, and I totally agree. And I would say that cancer represents everyone. Everyone's either a family member, friend, spouse, has experienced cancer somewhere along the line. And my reason for this is a personal one. Both of my parents passed away from cancer at a very young age, 56 and 57 years old. And so my younger sister is a breast cancer survivor. So that is the reason for this. I guess my concern would be is that we, as a council and as a public, spend a lot of time talking about creating a flag policy. And you did create a flag policy, and to my knowledge, Mr. Farinbach's proposal was the first one voted on in a public setting, other than the flag that has been flown for the last two years. And to some of the comments about a slippery, slippery slope, I would say that you just created a slippery slope by voting down the first flag proposal, other than the pride flag. So what do you now do in June of next year? And in some of my public comments before, I said, I'm a realist about the pride flag, but I'm also now a realist about other flags. And I guess a bit offended by the fact that someone just said that I would be up here every month asking to fly a flag, and that is not my intention at all. As a matter of fact, if you remember, I was of the feeling that you should only fly government flags. But if you were flying one particular flag, then it should be open to many other flags. And if you look across the realm of, of life, suicide awareness is, hey, everyone, has hit my family. Cancer, again, as I just said, hit my family. So if you're looking to make a flag policy and stick with your flag policy, this would be a perfect opportunity to show the community that you do support cancer awareness as you support other issues, but also make the community aware that there is the opportunity to come to the city council and ask that a particular flag be flown. I believe most people probably don't even know of a flag policy, as you can tell from the attendance at very, a lot of city council meetings and community hall meetings. And I've attended a lot over the years. So again, I would respectfully ask that you take this under serious consideration and that you think this would be an appropriate time to fly this flag for this month. And again, I will supply you any renderings you would like, and I happily pay the cost towards it. Thank you very much. And that would be under the terms of the policy as I understand it. Thank you for your consideration.
Any comments? Chris?
To the extent our community member believed that I had a comment directed directly to this particular member, it was misinterpreted because my comment was that we will have members of the community coming up every month to ask flags be flown. I did not direct a comment directly to any members in this room. And my comments on the situation of a slippery slope is the same for this one as it was for the last ones. I have the same position. And I still believe that we should also create some kind of a forum that the city can have where it's not actually on a flag pole out in front of the government center, where we can display the various things that are of important topics for each month, such as suicide prevention, pediatric cancer, cancer awareness, breast cancer, anything like that, which I believe can be done without putting it on the flagpole.
Kevin?
Yeah, you know, first off, I agree with Alderman Sulfah there that I like the idea of finding ways to engage in these, you know, awareness campaigns in these different months. You know, it felt icky voting down a suicide awareness flag, even though suicide is something that's extremely important. For the same reasons, I'm going to probably vote no on a cancer awareness flag, but of course, it's like very, very important that we engage in the awareness. As I'm thinking on that, I think Alderman Beck brought up a great point, you know, is it sort of universally recognizable, the flag? And for cancer awareness, ribbons are sort of the known, you know, pervasive, right? They call it pink washing, you know? NFL players are wearing pink and we have ribbons all over everything that's for breast cancer awareness. I would love to see ribbons on our flag polls even, ribbons on our, we have pillars here, because I know a lot of time and effort went into the marketing and kind of creating a brand to help bring awareness to cancer. And so for this particular one, a flag feels even more far afield just because people have done that work to do that. The, the last thing, and this is more of a question I'm throwing out there, I've heard often that we should only fly government flags. And so I'm sort of wondering, we fly the POW MIA flag, which is not a government flag, right? And so I suppose the question would then be, do we take that flag down if we're not, you know, flying, flying other flags? And so that it, we need to consider sort of the full impact of, of what's going on here. Flags have meaning. We are arguing and fighting about this. We're actually not arguing too much or fighting too much. We're having a deep conversation about this because flags, it matters, right? It seems silly, but it actually brings value to people in town, and so we need to find that balance. And for me, if it's not sort of directing the message that is, has been developed and established, then I don't see the value of us flying it.
I would argue, we should really take a look at our flag policy again, because for a simple reason that it has not been a slippery slope. It's been two years, right? There is no cascading request of flags coming through. We, Suicide Prevention Services flag for a local charity that's been around here for 30-plus years. They're going to be in chambers next month to talk about the organization. They have their staff by local volunteers. It even says Suicide Prevention Services on it. So if the criteria is, you know, from, from, from my perspective, obviously I brought it forward, every box has been checked, right? It's like, what more do you need, right? So if this makes us uncomfortable, then it's a bad policy, right? So...
Criteria are not part of the policy. So all, all the policy says is that only flags approved by the city council may fly on the flagpole.
Understood. So, so maybe there is, and maybe one of the things that, as we are forced to evaluate it, maybe we're determining criteria. I've heard, it's got to be a national symbol, okay? So, so that's what I've heard so far. So maybe these are notations that should go, you know, in accordance with the policy. Hey, if you want this thing to pass, here are the things that you need, right?
I think we should revisit it when the city attorney is available because I just, we want to stay far afield from the type of policy that Boston had, where they invited people to apply for their flags, and so long as they met a certain criteria, they were allowed to be flown, and then they denied it for a particular group, and then that's when the Supreme Court said, if you have a policy like that, that says if you check the boxes, you can fly the flag, then you have created a public forum for anyone that needs those criteria, and you may not deny. When someone can check the boxes, but you're suddenly found, you think, boy, if I had to decide whether we were going to fly that flag, it really makes me feel uncomfortable that our city is flying that flag, which is where Boston found themselves.
Kevin?
Yeah, I mean, I would just say that I think, I think we're finding ourselves in the exact problem we want to avoid. Unfortunately, flags are flags. Like Kevin said, there's, there's meaning there. People get, whatever you want to call it, charged up, whatever it is, but they feel it's representing them when it's flying on their city flagpole. We are finding ourselves where 14 people are deciding that, and we're all opinionated. We had a 12 to 2 vote, I believe it was, or 11 to 2, or whatever it was, on the unity flag, and we just had about the opposite vote here. I think that's probably where maybe some concern is lying, because to me, I mean, I hear what Jim's saying. In what world then? What, what are we approving? How does that happen? I don't understand that. So, other than an agenda, which should not be there, right, as a city? So in my opinion, yes, we need to revisit the flag policy and we need to implement a policy of no flags.
Come on.
To explain my yes vote, I, I think we live in a democratic republic. We live in, we are a representative democracy. We represent the people of Batavia. We are able to decide as a body, if we reach consensus, what we think the values of a community are. You're never going to get unanimous consent with 26,000 people. That's why we have a representative democracy. I think these, these two, both of these flags, very near and dear to me. Lost a brother to suicide and have had cancer myself. I think our policy allows for this because our policy is about us deciding, because we are the decision makers in Batavia. And that's, and we're elected to do that. And the community has the right to not elect us again. That's how a democratic republic works. So we have the authority to do that. We have the, the ability to decide what our values are and advertise those. And that's why I support both of these and, and will be voting yes again, so.
Paul?
Just wanted to echo some of the comments that I heard. I voted no for the flag, for the suicide flag, but also have been affected by that personally and cancer as well, with family members that have had that. So both of these issues are very important to me. My no on suicide, on the flag, this particular flag that Alder... that Alder person, Jim, brought up, and the cancer one, is because I, I find it hard to promote a nonprofit organization, similar to what other Alder people have said, when there are many worthy causes and nonprofit organizations in our town that would like their flags flown. So in that regard, I do feel that's a slippery slope. Yes, we're elected to make these tough decisions. I would be in favor of putting a flag that's more widely known, like the teal and purple one, which I had looked up, Jim, because I, when you first brought it up, that's what I thought the flag was going to be. So for me personally, that's why I voted no. I would support a more widely known flag then more people would know what it's about. Also, the flag, flag that we have up, that a lot of us are alluding to, is up, it also represents inclusivity, right? And so for me, when I look at the decisions that we make, I like to reference the strategic plan and what all of our decisions that we make are tied to. And the first page of the strategic plan talks about our mission, our vision, and our values. And the one common denominator with those three is belonging and inclusivity. And so to me, any flag that we fly up there should represent that. And I don't feel that, although cancer, yes, it does represent, a lot of us are affected indirectly or directly by it. But to me, it doesn't symbolize that feeling of belonging, that all are welcome. So that's why I am going to be a no vote for the cancer one as well.
Chris?
Just because there's people who weren't here when we had this huge discussion. I think there was only a couple of us, actually. It's found under Chapter 7, the flag policy. Reads as follows, just so everybody knows what it says. "It is the policy of the city of Batavia that flags should be displayed in conformance with federal and state policies as stated in the federal, Our Flag Publication of the Congress, House Document Number 96144, and the Flag Display Act of the State of Illinois. Order of precedence, outdoor flags will be flown at city facilities in the following order of precedence. First, the United States flag. Second, the State of Illinois flag. And third, the POW Batavia community flag." This is the one where there is a little bit of variance. "There are special occasions of federal, state, and local proclamation. Flags at city buildings should be displayed in accordance with the above standards. However, the mayor may order flags to be lowered at half-staff, including but not limited to flags of the United States of America and the State of Illinois in honor of the death of a city employee or an observance of a specific event or circumstance. Pursuant to proclamation of the mayor, a resolution of the city council, other flags may be flown by the city of Batavia." And then we have the definition of what other flags are, other flags. Number one, the city's flagpoles are not intended to serve as a forum for free expression by the public. The following flags may be displayed as an expression of the city's official sentiments. And there's only three. Actually, there's only two. Flags of governments recognized by the United States. Flags of governments recognized by the United States may be displayed upon the proclamation of the mayor or resolution of city council. And then there's the only other variance of what another flag is. Flags displayed in conjunction with official events or ceremonies announced by mayoral proclamation or city council resolution. By proclamation of the mayor or resolution of the city council, other flags may be displayed as official city events or ceremonies. So there's your definition. Everybody can follow that. And then everybody can vote on every particular flag each time one comes up. But basically, the ones that we're talking about tonight would be under Section 771 D1B, for everybody who wants to look it up. And I believe that this was discussed extensively. And I believe that, as an attorney, I think it's rather well worded. I think it's very protective of us. And I think there's no reason to change it at this point in time.
It gives us the ability to okay that, either by mayoral proclamation or by city council resolution.
And then there's everybody.
Those two ways.
That's the way to do it.
I thought it, my question was, did there need to be a proclamation before a flag can be? I thought, that's how I heard it.
Well, it does. It either has to be, it has to be either or.
Proclamation or resolution.
Right, and that's what I understood.
And in reality, it is us that get to make that decision. Because even if the mayor makes the proclamation, we have to vote on it.
Right.
To approve the proclamation. Right, to approve it. So, you know, and if I remember correctly, I can't remember if I talked to which one of our lawyers I talked to about it. But I believe it was to leave it open and it did not have boxes to check. Because that's when you get yourself into a situation where, hey, A, B, C, and D, I got all of them checked. And you're saying no, now that's reason for, you know, the lawsuit. And I think that's what we wanted to avoid. And, you know, if they are out there and there are things that we want to get up there and we want to support, like the, oh, missing an action flag. You know, I think that that's something that I find it very hard to not support that. But I also see the benefit of us only having three flags up there. I mean, if it was up to me, we'd take the Illinois flag down and just fly the United States flag, and that's it. You know, and half of us can like it and half of us cannot like it. You know, but that's the reality is we get to make that decision in this country, and we get to talk about this and make the decisions. Go back, Kevin, for a second.
Yeah, I hate to sort of, sort of shift topics just a little bit. But I was also Googling around and looking, is October cancer awareness month? Everything I find is that it's breast cancer awareness month. So I also just want to make sure that if we do proceed with a proclamation that we are lining up with kind of the nationally recognized awareness months. Now, I'm going to admit that, like, the, the breast cancer awareness filled up the first three pages of my Google search, so maybe it is in there. I just want to make sure that if we are doing a proclamation, we're, we're sort of lining it up properly for cancer awareness.
And this just kind of feeds into my comment. Slippery slope was not meant to be derogatory towards anybody's sentiments or anybody's expressions or anybody's awareness of whatever cause it may be. It's the whole thing that there's lots and lots and lots of causes that everybody's aware of. As Alderman Malone just stated, I mean, technically, I do believe he is correct that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month because I know for a fact that September is Go Gold Pediatric Cancer Awareness Month. And you'll see signs out in my yard for that, promoting awareness of pediatric cancer as soon as September 1st hits.
I'll have my pink socks on at the football games in October.
In October, right? So I mean, the thing is, is that the reason why I'm saying it's a slippery slope is there's so many good causes, so many things people need to be aware of. We only have so much space on the flagpole. I think that proclamations, inviting people in, if you have a topic, like Alderman Farrenbach indicated, he's bringing people in to come talk about this. That's, that's a real good way to do it. Because then it's going to be on YouTube. People can come in, they can listen to it, they can actually come in and ask questions. It'll be on the agenda. People can watch it. Ad nauseam, for decades, centuries later, they can look it up as to what that organization may have said. And I think that is a good way to bring awareness. I'm just saying the slippery slope is there's so many, so many different flags that will be that, and I'm not saying they were going to be voting on them all the time. I'm just saying that there's going to be people coming in and then, you know, you don't want to look like you're picking and choosing which, which thing you think is, is, needs to be placed on a higher awareness than others. Because I think that that makes it look like you're picking and choosing. And I think that all of these causes are very important. And I think everybody needs to be able to have a say in these things and be able to make sure that they get across their point in terms of what needs to be done. I just don't necessarily know that the flagpole is the necessary best way to do so.
Kevin?
National Cancer Prevention Awareness Month is February. Every single month, except for December, there is a, some sort of cancer recognition. This was Prolexity AI. So you might want to upgrade your search engines a little bit.
I'm in the Stone Ages over here.
But I just read today they're looking at buying Google. So maybe, maybe sticking with As Good. Anyways, as I listen to this, you know, maybe with some of what we're talking about, you know, with the ribbons for cancer month, you know, maybe that's something as a council we decide to do together to honor that. Maybe we get ribbons, you know, once a month and, you know, honor something like that. And this would be all volunteer, all volunteers. So if there's council members that don't feel comfortable doing that, they, they definitely have the option of opting out. But, you know, maybe that's, maybe when we kind of look at this, if a flag isn't the thing that we are always going to do, because I feel like after a while, putting a flag up, it's just going to become like, oh, it's just a flag. Like, people are just going to get numb to that. So maybe this is one way of honoring it of what do other, how do these organizations that we determine that maybe we want to recognize? You know, with the proclamations coming in, you know. I'd be happy to wear a ribbon for that during those conversations. So that may be one thing to explore.
Yeah, just to add what I said previously, I do believe that the majority, the strong majority of constituents that I represent in the 4th Ward would support both of these flags. And I also, when I voted to, for the pride flag, I believe there was a strong majority that supported that. So again, representative democracy.
I would, I would agree, at least for members of my ward. I literally live around people who volunteer for those organizations. So, so I mean, I get the impression, this is just my opinion, so after hearing all this, maybe things get over amplified when, when, when they kind of enter these chambers, right? And if we do have criteria, whether it be formal or informal, I think it's worth circulating, okay? I don't know how that happens. To the point, maybe a city attorney needs to be involved. What I'd hate to do, and we're kind of doing it, if we're honest about it, is give the impression that there is an amorphous wall you have to push against to figure out, hey, what's going to pass, what's not. Really, all we're asking is, hey, you know what? We have a good organization, we have a good cause. Can we fly, can we fly the flag on the flagpole, right? And suddenly, the gravity that got dumped on this, unbelievable. Okay, so, so, so just something to keep in mind is we should, when I hear the word slippery slope, I don't think it's a big deal for somebody to come in and say, hey, can you, can you fly a flag for pediatric cancer? Can you fly a flag for, you know, Boy Scouts? Can you fly a flag for, you know, Girl Scouts? You know, Batavia Football Team, right? These aren't things that, like, you know, trigger me or make me think it should be a larger conversation.
I guess the, the danger there is that if controversial groups can check the boxes for a criteria-based policy, that's when we were advised that we'd fall in the category of Boston and we would be legally obligated to fly a controversial flag, one that city council themselves found controversial.
Yeah, and just sort of directly to what Jim was saying about sort of this amorphous thing you're pushing against. I'm an elected official with a public email address. I would encourage my constituents to email me and ask what, what, how would I vote on a flag? What am I thinking of when it comes to flags? I think what Tony was sharing of this being a representative democracy, I don't think I need to necessarily translate one-to-one my constituents to policy made here. I think I do get some discretion, but they should ask me. And I, I think I'm going to go out on a limb and say that all of you are open to having folks ask you as well. So I really think that asking is a great way to do it. And if you don't like me, vote against me.
I've said that many times. And I guess I'll say, try to wrap some of this up. You know, one of the things that I thought about this, and this goes back a couple of years with flying the pride flag, is it does bring awareness. It is something that ends up in the news and gets out to a majority of the public. I doubt that there's more than 10 people watching tonight. You know, the, the viewership on the, the live version of the Committee of Home Meetings is not very large. But I guarantee you, after a flag goes up and 30 days elapse, or whatever month it is, people talk about that. People are aware of that. People, you know, understand, at least what I've got feedback on, of why we've flown that flag and why we have a flag policy. And, you know, okay, what would it take if I wanted to have my Lions flag up there? Or, you know, whatever organization that was. And I said, it's not really about that promoting a local thing. It's something that in some way or shape or form affects everybody in the community. And then the 14 of us get to decide if we think that's true and if we think that that's something that deserves to be up on that flag. And again, it's subjective. And if people don't like the way they vote, they can always step up and run for office or organize against us and put somebody else in the seat. And, you know, as much as I kind of think the, the two or three flags probably belong up there without question, I do really feel like, in some ways, it is our responsibility to look at some of the things that we can do that can help our community or that can be part of the mission of our community. And, you know, when you think about the things that you've been involved in, as long as I've been on the council, there's a few things that I really feel good about. And one of the, probably the number one is the fact that we have BATV tape and record and broadcast every one of these meetings. So somebody that can't get here can watch and listen to the 20 or 30 people that came in to talk about chickens, six, you know, seven meetings in a row, or that came in here and talked about flags. I mean, that's, to me, one of the things that I feel really proud of, of being on this city council. And I think, you know, we have to make decisions about all kinds of stuff. And to me, the things that are so small and really probably shouldn't have much discussion are the ones that have the most discussion. The amount of time we wasted on chickens is unbelievable in my mind. And guarantee, if somebody drove around town, they couldn't pick out the 20 or 30 people that we have that have the permit to have chickens in their backyard. Because you can't tell that they're there. They don't want everybody to know that. So, you know, the, the reality on this is, I think, this is something that it's going to evolve and we're going to have to, you know, figure out how we promote these, how we vote on them, how we decide, you know. And maybe it's our own internal criteria that we have. And that keeps us out of the checking the box lane that I know we don't want to be in. So I guess that's it. And I'll make a motion that we approve the city to display the cancer awareness flag for the month of October.
Second. Roll call, please.
Barazza?
No.
Lancy?
No.
Beck?
No.
Malley?
Aye.
Malone?
No.
Sulfah?
No.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
No.
Lehman?
No.
Loman?
No.
Peeper? Farrenback?
Aye.
Anderson?
No.
Vogel Singer? Okay.
39.
39.
Okay, that motion also fails.
I'm going to make a, do some type of a proclamation. I'm going to...
You want to do it for breast cancer awareness for, so it lines up with October?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to do a pediatric cancer awareness month for September, too. I mean, I think...
Okay. We can do each one of those. Again, I think it's important when, you know, you're touched by it or your family is, or, you know, you've been through, you know, fundraisers and everything to help a family out in town. You know, those kind of things, I think, all resonate with, I think, most of us, you know, on, on just about a level playing field on that, so.
Yeah, I'd move for proclamation on both. And I'd also encourage every resident in the city and every business owner to, if they have a cause that they want to raise awareness to, they have the ability to put up like the SPS flag, you know. I mean, support them. I think it's, if you see a lot throughout the community, it's even more important than just looking at a flagpole that might not be looked at very often by people walking by.
Alderman Sulfah, would you be, want to read that proclamation for us when it's, it was under the pediatric cancer?
I will do so.
And then would there be a volunteer to do the breast cancer? Okay, thank you.
Alan?
Alan?
Yes.
I, I keep looking up at the screen, the little preview of us from BATV. The blank wall right over Sulfah's head keeps calling to me as kind of a display place that, for folks that are watching at home and folks that do visit us here live, that that's a very prominent spot. Every time you speak, every time Sulfah speaks, that wall is right there. As well as anytime somebody is at the podium. Cancer, again, when I thought of cancer flag, I didn't think flag, I thought ribbon. So the idea of a ribbon around the, the pedestal right there, the pillar right next to the podium, so every time somebody is speaking throughout that month, it's highly visible, I think would be a nice touch, too. At, at work, we have a colleague that has breast cancer. So we have our team meetings on Monday. Every Monday, we wear pink. That is like our just team thing. So I'm happy to participate in all of the things.
Comments? Do you want to say something, Bob?
Oh, no, I just, I couldn't see before here, no, that's why I stood up, that's all.
Okay.
Okay. Just for, for my notes, can we break those two motions up into two and vote on them, just so my notes are clear and concise?
We can do that. Okay, so the first one will be for pediatric cancer for September, or proclamation, first meeting in September.
So moved.
Second. Okay, motion by Sulfah, second by, um, Malone. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, that passes. And then the second one will be proclamation for breast cancer awareness for October 2025.
All moved.
One second. Loman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. And so everybody will get to read something during the year. Okay, then let's move on to item 6.4, which is ordinance 2025-042, amending the text of the zoning code for sign regulations relating to wall signs above the first floor in the LI and GI districts. Aldi, the applicant.
Thank you, counsel. Um, yeah, this item on the agenda tonight is revising the text of the zoning code to address basically the situation where presently in the LI and GI districts, uh, there is not an allowance for signage to be displayed above the first floor. Uh, that's been in the code since 2010. We did make changes over the past few years to address allowances for that in the DMU and the PFI district. Uh, and so Aldi was going, you know, has been going through several updates to the campus as they're getting ready to, uh, basically welcome staff from the, the region back into the main headquarters. Uh, they've been doing, uh, they're, they've done an office addition over the past couple of years, along with the parking deck. And they're doing some significant, uh, work within renovating the offices, preparing those for, um, the influx of staff that they're, they're, uh, preparing for. Part of that update, they would like to add their brand identity to the building. Uh, so rather than go through a variance process, staff felt it was more appropriate to seek an amendment to the zoning code to better address this, uh, this particular situation. Uh, so we did a whole public hearing, uh, at the last, uh, Plankhurst meeting on, uh, July 30th, uh, and the Plankhurst Commission did review those changes. Originally, the, the text was drafted to include also the SB and, which is service business, uh, which is more of a quasi-industrial district, uh, as well as our office district. Um, the commission felt, uh, that the updating that, or those particular districts, uh, they were less comfortable with, particularly because, uh, those districts have more immediate proximity to residential. Uh, so they, uh, did seek to, uh, limit the proposed changes to the text of the code to the LI and GI district. Uh, so that is what was included in ordinance 2025-042. Uh, and then with the new, um, system we have for the agendas, I guess I was the first, uh, to have to update the, uh, an item on the agenda if there was a minor, uh, uh, issue with the section, uh, where the old text was, was present in the ordinance. So, uh, we would recommend the action tonight be to, um, approve the updated copy of ordinance 2025-042. Uh, and, uh, with that, the applicant is here to answer any questions of the commission, but we do recommend approval, uh, of the revised ordinance.
It's just one line that was changed, right?
Yes.
Not included in there and it was basically a holdover from the old.
Yes, so essentially that, yeah, that language was the, the original language that basically prohibited the first story. Signage was still present, uh, basically when you copy over red line, it sometimes re, reactivates that as regular tux. So, uh, that, that, that was the, uh, the one change was to get rid of that, um, old language from that, uh, from the ordinance.
Questions? Abby?
What was the specific concern about it being in the office or the other, um, commercial district? Is it the lighting? Is it just?
Yes, so I think the, the commission's, um, consensus was that, you know, above the second story, there might be, yeah, impacts like, yeah, through lighting would probably be the main, uh, item for that. We do have language within the, the code presently addressing when commercial or industrial buildings are facing a residential property that limits the amount of, uh, basically, limits illuminated signage to a various, actually, I think it prohibits illuminated signage outright and it limits the overall sign area. But the commission still felt that, even though there's probably very few circumstances where that would exist, they didn't want to create a, a situation in the future where those uses could, uh, potentially have a larger sign, um, without having the ability to really, um, review that on a, you know, in the future, if somebody wanted to come back with, uh, a revision, they wanted to not open that box at this point.
I guess, to me, this isn't that big of one. I don't even know if we need the applicant unless they want to come up and say something. Um, tonight, I, to me, this is pretty simple and I actually like the fact that I really wish Aldi would build their, you know, like, the latest and greatest store should be right at the corner of Fabian and Kirk. It should be, you know, their marquee and it should be out there. I've always kind of, you know, wondered why they never wanted to do that, to have, you know, the newest thing they had there being their world headquarters right next to it, to show it off. That's my two cents about it. Okay, um, someone want to make a motion for ordinance 2025-042, amending the text of the zoning code for sign regulations relating to wall signs above the first floor in LI and GI districts? Aldi incorporated applicant. And this would include the updated version that was on the agenda.
All moved.
Second.
Malley and Anderson. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and that'll go on the next city council for approval. Um, up next is 6.5, which is ordinance 2025-043, amending the 2025 wage and salary ordinance.
Um, so the assistant director of Public Works City Engineer had given notice that he was, um, leaving the city on, and it was effective August 8th. And that gave us the opportunity to, um, review and evaluate our current staffing structure in Public Works. And, um, we are recommending the following changes. Um, the, Tim Grimm is currently the assistant city engineer and he would be promoted to the new position of city engineer. And we would eliminate, um, the position of assistant city engineer. Uh, we promote the electric superintendent, Steve Allen, to a new position of assistant director of Public Works for Electric. Um, we eliminate the position of assistant director of Public Works City Engineer. And we would eliminate the position of electric superintendent. So the, uh, thought here is that the additional duties that the, um, electric, of the electric utility that had previously been done by the former Public Works Director Gary Home, as well as the duties that Rahat Bari performed for the electric utility, um, would become the responsibility of the assistant director of Public Works for Electric. Um, and that position would have oversight of just the electric utility and the engineering department would then be managed by the city engineer who will report to the director of Public Works. In addition to these changes, uh, the engineering department is looking to add a civil engineer in place of an open engineering assistant position. Uh, they had advertised for, uh, an opening in the engineering assistant position and found it very difficult to find, uh, in fact, they did not in the first round, round, find a qualified applicant for that position. And with the, um, assistant director of Public Works City Engineer leaving, that, um, leaves, uh, a need for another civil engineer in order to, uh, address their current workload in the department. Um, the proposed changes actually result in a cost savings of $147,166. And so staff is requesting that city council approve these proposed changes and amend the wage and salary ordinance, uh, for non-collectively bargained employees, which reflects these changes.
Anybody have any questions? I have one.
Yes.
The 147,000 that we save, is that going to then, part of that be spent on the engineer? Or is that?
It's net of hiring the engineer.
Okay, so that's already part of it.
That's got to be into it. Andrea, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
No, you covered it pretty well. Um, I will add, though, that the engineering, um, assistant position was vacated by Daniel O'Neil. So he was half-time engineering civil, half-time engineering electric. He moved over to be the senior engineering tech for the electric division. So, um, with Rahat having half civil and half electric as his duties, uh, we kind of thought maybe this might be a way to solve that vacancy. They have had this position posted more than once and we've done more than one round of candidates and just have not found the person that is fit for this role. So we thought if we hired a, um, a newer, younger engineer that they'd be able to do some of that field time as well and assist and, um, help get that experience. So, um, we needed to address the issues with the city engineer position immediately just due to items that are listed in code for, um, plats and all of that. So we could not leave that position vacant without filling at least an interim and we felt that this was the best fit for that. Um, and we are still working on electric revisions. Um, it's a fluid thing. We have known about Rahat leaving a little over two weeks. So as we kind of ruffle out all the feathers, we may be coming back with additional revisions to the public work structure for that. But, um, right now, this will kind of take over or cover some of the stuff in the civil side.
Now we just need a motion for ordinance 2025-043, amending the 2025 wage and salary ordinance.
All moved.
Second.
Motion by Sulfah, second by Malley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we'll go on to a discussion, um, about city energy policy. Max is making his way up there. I have to say, I've read this a few different times and I like kind of the simplicity of it and not trying to go too far off in any direction with it, but just try to give really a basic overview of where we think we're going.
Yeah, so that's a really good segue into kind of how this came to be and some of the considerations that went into drafting this. At its core, I tried to take, you know, your hour-plus-long discussion, I think you had on the 29th, and try to distill it down into something that, um, both the public but also policymakers and those who are helping us go through this process can understand and also design a portfolio, policy, IRP, et cetera, that aligns with the policy. The seven sections on there align directly with the kind of criteria that Brattle Group will be using to help develop the IRP. So the policies that you choose on a specific topic, like, um, local versus further away, whether it's time to interconnect, those are some of the considerations that Brattle Group will be making. So you giving them guidance on those specific domains, I'll, I'll call them, uh, helps ensure that the policy that you draft and approve is ultimately what makes its way into the IRP, which then comes back to you and back to this community for additional feedback, consideration and input. Um, so it's kind of upfront, we put this policy in place, but then at the end of the day, you're still deciding on any decision. So it kind of helps refine the policy or helps refine the IRP process so that we're bringing you things that align with what you've said is your established policy. Um, so with that, I'll kind of just open it up for discussion. I'm happy to answer any questions. But our goal was to kind of reflect what we believe you all discussed and talked about.
To make this kind of go quickly, I think, we might just go around the, if that's okay with you, we just go around the room. And if you have comments or have questions or have something that you don't like or something you'd like to see added, um, just so we can get through this fairly quickly. So, Robin, you get to start if you have anything.
No, reading through, I think it was in a good balance of specificity without necessarily cornering us into anything. I think one of the big things as we look as, look to the future for our energy policy is that we don't know a lot of what is going to be available to us in the future and what the developments are going to be. Um, so it does not seem to make sense to really get too specific. Of, you know, it, it, there's advancements in, um, energy capabilities every day and we don't know what's going to be available here. So, um, I, there was nothing I would, that stood out to me that needed changing.
Tim?
Um, I, I share similar sentiments. I don't see anything that jumps out at me other than the fact that, yeah, you know, obviously I, I do not, uh, support tying us in anything, uh, uh, long-term just because, exactly what Robin said, there's, there's just too much, too much fluctuation and, and not enough, uh, we don't know if we're going to go VHS or Beta yet, so.
You even know it is VHS.
I do, yeah, believe it or not.
I had a couple of questions and a couple wording tweaks. In ownership structure, I would add the city seeks to mitigate long-term, um, environmental and regulatory burdens. Or the way you phrased it, too, it just mirrors what you have in hedging policy that we're mitigating regulatory compliance costs and future environmental liabilities. I do think they're two different things and both important to call out and reemphasize in both places. Um, I had a question under resource diversity, what, um, firm capacity resources meant? What do you, what is meant by firm capacity?
So, the idea behind that is that there's intermittent resources, those that are, um, dispatchable based on, um, time of day. But then there's also, we have a base load power demand in this community. Um, so at any given time, I think we need to provide somewhere around 48 megawatts of electricity. Sometimes that's more, sometimes that's less, depending on different times of day and different, um, conditions and whatnot. So it seeks to address the fact that we still need to have some level of 48 megawatts of capacity and there needs to be the ability to provide lights on all the time. How that's provided, whether it's significant battery storage that provides enough capacity to do that, whether it's contracts, whether it's all of that, it's really just addressing the fact that there needs to be some level of base load power supply to cover that. It's not, um, specific as to where that comes from. You know, right now, a lot of base load power comes from fossil fuels or nuclear. Those are really the two main base load power sources. So that's what that seeks to address is that, kind of on a 24/7/365, there's some base level of power that this community needs and, and likely expects.
Tony?
Well, I wasn't here at the discussion. I did, I watched the video, um, good discussion. Um, I agree with you, Alan, I think it, that it's, um, concise and to the point. Uh, I, I like the, uh, local renewable, um, emphasis in there. And so, um, I'm, I'm good with this.
Yeah, I'll sort of, I was looking back over my notes as I was looking at it. It seems to capture effectively how our conversation went, which I think is great. Um, a quick question, um, just my mind goes to 1, 2, 3, 4, means that that's the priority structure? Is it to be read as priority structure? And if not, is it possible just to change A, B, C, D so idiots like me don't, uh, get the wrong idea?
Yeah, we can do that. This was just in the order that.
And I know that sounds petty, but.
Understandable.
Yeah.
Would it be preferred to just?
Yeah, or bullets or something, I know. I know it seems silly, but as a work process guy. Yeah. Uh, the other thing, yeah, I'm going to echo to, um, you know, we of course need to, to worry about our regulatory burdens and that comes up several times. Um, I also think we need to, uh, just sort of reemphasize the environmental, um, obligation that we have as well. We want to avoid both of those pitfalls.
My comment was very similar in that I liked the purpose, but if I was going to word it, I would word it in alignment with reliability, affordability, adaptability and sustainability. So I'd like it in a different order. But I think that kind of goes to the point of Alderman Malone just now. Let's get rid of numbers and just put nice little bullets, little dots, and that's it.
That one doesn't show any order or any timing or anything in it. It's just the actual.
And as a matter of fact, in order.
Points we want.
As a matter of fact, in order to, um, make it look just completely generic, put it in alphabetical order. So, you know, I guess the first one then would be hedging and then go on down. Alphabetical. But I would like the wording's changed for that. then go on down. Alphabetical. But I would like the wording's changed for that. I mean, if I was going to do it, I'd change the order of the purpose up top. Or you can put purpose in no particular order as follows.
And I'll just say, at the end of the day, you know, any decisions that get made, there's going to be a heck of a lot more considerations that go into it. You know, you're going to have a lot more resources, data, information at your disposal that discusses all of these different components in an energy discussion.
That's why I like the way you had it all. I mean, I like, it's nice and straightforward and basic. I mean, these are just quibbling points here in terms of, you know, just the way things are numbered, worded, whatever, I mean. But overall, I think this is, I think it's a very nice summary, and it's a good starting off point, because like you just said, Max, I mean, it's not like there's not going to be extensive discussions, I'm pretty sure.
I have nothing more to add. Everybody has said everything.
Alice?
Just want to say, I think you did a really good job at identifying what our needs were. I don't have any changes either.
Jim?
I went through the, I was here for the discussion, unfortunately. But one thing, as I read it, we had a bit of an issue when we did the Prairie State thing, right? 30-year contract and all that stuff. It'd be great to see a note just saying, hey, you know what, we're going to make sure we have short, short to medium, not commit ourselves to a long-term, multi-decade contract around energy. I don't know how you'd phrase it or get that in there, but I feel like we owe it to ourselves and to folks reading this, that we acknowledge that we made a mistake and not going to do it again.
I kind of think that's included in the hedging policy.
I was going to say, that was the intent behind it, is where we say, to maintain price stability, affordability, the utility will seek portfolio diversity, so that goes to diversity of portfolio, phased procurement. And the idea behind that is kind of as contracts are ending, we're looking at new contracts. As those contracts are ending, we're kind of staggering things, so we're not in this situation we are right now. So that was designed to address some of the points about having some commitment to things, but really phasing them and kind of staggering them together.
Okay. Leah, did you have any comments?
Thanks, Alan. In our last discussion on this, we were getting a little in the weeds and, I think, pulling back and saying, what are, what high-level things are we looking at? And I do think that this policy is, kind of wraps up all of what we were discussing, and it's a good start to what we want to send off to Brattle. But as, like Max is saying, like, there will be changes, there will be adjustments, we will learn stuff. So this is a good start. We'll put it that way. It's a good start.
And I'll just wrap up our council discussion here on this. I think, to me, what I felt like we were at when we were done with our discussion here is, we stated all the things that each one of us felt like needed to be part of it. And the biggest thing that I think rang true to me was to be adaptable, whether it's sourcing, whether it's pricing, whether it's, you know, how we handle things, we have to be adaptable. And I think part of that is going to be what technology does to us over the next five or 10 years is really going to dictate what's going to be available to us and how things are going to change. And then regulatory and environmental issues are going to be the biggest thing, especially when Prairie State shuts down, because we have no idea what the reality of the costs are. I mean, they're trying to plan now, and they're trying to put money aside for it. But we have no idea what the regulatory changes are going to be between now and then that will affect that. And that's something I think we just have to be ready to, you know, how our utility handles that, our little piece of it, compared to, you know, everything else that'll be going on in the world at that time. Susan, I'm sure you want to say something.
Good evening, Susan Russo. I've had an opportunity to sit down with a group of fellow Batavia residents, and we looked at this policy. We get together periodically, and we're all concerned about energy issues. And one of the persons actually raised exactly what you said, Kevin, was that the numbering seemed to prioritize each one of the sections. And so it was felt that, you know, eliminating, eliminating that would be an important thing to do. The second thing that a couple people were, thought that the narrative format of the policy made it quite confusing. And so, as a result of our conversation, we restructured it into an outline type of a form with two main categories, one being resource planning, and then the second one being investment decisions. And then, under resource planning, then you'd put ownership of power sources, technology maturity, resource location, resource diversity, local election transmission, and then, under the investment decisions, hedging and timing. And when that got done, it seemed to make it much more clear and readable and easy to hone in exactly on what types of objectives you're trying to achieve. I would be very happy to share this draft, this revised draft, you know, with you, Max, and have you take a look at it and see if you find it workable. I think it works better personally, and this is not all my doing, please. There were others involved. And substantively, we really kept virtually everything in there. I think there were a couple of things we wanted to see added, and they're relatively minor. One was in the purpose to add the word resiliency, because reliability does not really speak entirely to what your objectives are with the delivery of electricity. Resiliency speaks more to the ability to act, you know, with flexibility to meet the situation. So we thought it was important to add that word. Abby already mentioned, under ownership, BMU, we also, we also identified who's going to be responsible for this and shortened Batavia Municipal Electric Utility to BMEU. So the utility will seek to mitigate long-term environmental burdens, environmental and regulatory burdens. We felt that that was important to keep in mind. You know, kind of thinking in terms of Prairie State and the environmental problems we potentially face with that, that that should be put into the policy, that those need to be mitigated as well. Just something to consider, that word firm capacity, I think, was a problem. To my knowledge, I've never, I've never heard the word firm being used, and I understand what Max said about intermittent. But just consider changing that to, say, clean capacity. That would be speaking kind of towards nuclear-type contracts, which would be clean, but also be that base load type energy source. And then, the last one was under hedging. You already said the mitigation of future environmental liabilities. We felt that it should also include climate change liabilities. Again, because there are going to be substantial climate change issues with regard to liabilities, and that also speaks to your endorsement and approval of the Greenest Region Compact. It goes to meeting the objectives and goals of that compact. To my knowledge, you know, the city and the city council hasn't, you know, done a lot with regard to making sure that those are met, and this is certainly by including that language in this policy would go a long way to doing that. So I'm offering this in good faith, and I hope you take a look at it, and I'll get that to Max tomorrow morning, and hopefully that'll help you. It helped us clarify. It just kind of boom, it popped, and it made sense, and I hope it makes sense to you, too. Thanks.
Thank you, Susan. I just would also say is that, you know, this is something that I think we're in a process now, that when this goes back to the Brattle Group and we see what comes out of that, and then we try to, I think, in some ways, we'll probably be back looking at this again and saying, okay, this is the three things that Susan brought up. This is the five things that Brattle Group kind of put towards this policy. And then, at that point, I think that's when we'll really firm up and say, this is going to be our policy. You know, because I think this is, especially now, is still in discussion.
I understand. It's a discussion, but you, I believe you need to pass the policy fairly quickly so that Brattle knows what your policy is, right? And, and, you know, I guess, I don't, I don't know what you're saying. I don't-
Thinking that we're going to revise it after we get the information back from the Brattle Group. I just don't think we're going to say, this is the policy we have now and we're going to use it for the next 10 years. You know, and that's-
Okay, well, that's true of any policy.
Right. And that's what I feel like that's the position we're in now.
Right.
You know, and I appreciate all the time that I know you've had to have spent to come up with all the notes, with all the information that you've provided. So just thank you for that. And, you know, I think that-
If I'm hearing you right, I'm hearing you say you're not going to look at what we put together.
No, I just said that we would take into account the things you brought up tonight before we finalize this policy.
Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you.
That's what I'm trying to say, and I think beyond that, the next step is going to be, after we get the information back from Brattle, we may come back and change that.
Exactly. I understand. You had me confused. I'm sorry.
I'm not trying to confuse you.
I'm not trying to be difficult. I just, I was confused. But yeah, that would, that makes sense. Because as any policy, it's, you change it periodically, you know, so that's perfectly understandable. And it may be informed by the information that Brattle gives you, and, you know, then you can-
And then, depending on what happens downstate, we might be forced to do something different.
Exactly, exactly. Okay. Thank you again.
Alice?
Thank you for taking the time to look at that over in the notes. Question, so Max is going to take her notes and look at them, and then perhaps change or add some things and present it back. I guess I'm wondering what the next steps are because of the confusion. I was also confused on what's next.
It sounds like we'll have two versions to give to you, and you can take a look at both versions and see if you want one or the other, and try to incorporate the comments that City Council made into both versions, and then you can decide which of those two you'd like to pass at City Council. We'll include both.
Will there also be incorporated some of Susan's comments, or just-
Susan's version will be in there, included with the comments of changing the regulatory to environmental and regulatory and making it bullet points. And so, all the changes that were recommended to Max's draft will also be incorporated into, I assume they already are incorporated into Susan's draft, and you can decide which of those two you find better.
And that'll be at the council meeting, the next council meeting?
Yes, because Brattle is aiming to provide us with the preliminary draft of the IRP by the end of the month, right, Max? Did you want to comment on that?
Yeah, so a couple of things on timeline. I was going to ask, you know, we can bring this back to council next week, and we can do that. In terms of the Brattle Group timeline, they're kind of, we've shared this with them already in terms of like, hey, here's the draft the City Council's going to be discussing. Expect that there may be some changes. So right now, they're working off of the assumption that the policy that you're discussing is, in many ways, going to be close to the policy you're passing. And so ultimately, they will make tweaks once you've finalized your policy, and then make sure that their draft IRP reflects all of that. And then, once the draft IRP comes out, we'll do public hearings, public processes, kind of the whole shebang, public notices and that whole thing. But yeah, my goal is to kind of take all the feedback here today, mush it all together, kind of, you know, provide two versions that address kind of more of what we have now versus some of the feedback we've gotten as well. I think it makes sense. And then we'll bring that back to the council discussion. That way, you can ultimately decide on one, pass one, and go from there.
You know, a quick question on this. So if I fast-forward a year from now and the energy policy's out of the way, I'm assuming this is ending up with an ask for some big CapEx expenses. Is that, is that where we're kind of ended up with this?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
Are we going to be asked to, are we going to line up some major purchases to align with the policy after we're done with this, or is this going on a shelf?
I would-
I don't know that we're going to be recommending major purchases.
Okay. I would say that part of their study is going to be electric infrastructure.
Right.
And so I don't think it's a surprise to anyone that there will need to be some investments into our local grid, long-term, just because the grid is approaching kind of a lot of its end of life. So, you know, to that extent, they may be recommending a capital plan for us for the grid. They will also, you know, be evaluating, like, here's when you might want to consider purchasing additional generation resources. Here's when you may want to be considering to implement some of these demand response programs. That is what an IRP is, so.
They may be also suggesting things that are an investment to mitigate the volatility of the capacity market.
Yep.
That's not a good place to end that. We will then go to item seven, which is city council updates. First up is project status. Laura?
Yes. The green program, our program that utilizes the bag fee to provide incentives to our residents to improve the energy efficiency of their homes. We made the notifications to those who were going to be receiving grants on last Tuesday. Over 120 people applied for that program, and it only had 25 slots. But even those who applied and didn't receive the grants, we shared energy-saving tips with them that hopefully will be things that they can easily apply to their environments, and we hope that it's a successful program that we can repeat in the future. Today, I met with Nikki from the Batavia Environmental Commission, as well as Beth from Main Street, to take a look at the area that was proposed for the Art of the Fox Garden on the east side of the government center. But it just so happens to be in the exact same place where Cocktails in the Park is. And I'm happy to report that we were able to come up with a compromise of where the garden is located. It'll be located closer to the building than you had previously seen in the proposal, and it'll be kind of a beautiful arc shape that spans all of the 10 figures that are that are up there. So it actually ended up being more of the nature of 70 feet long, but an area is from about 10 feet out from the building to about 15 feet out from the building at its furthest points. So we look forward to finalizing that proposal and getting it back to you so that we can move into the implementation phase of that this fall. Housiel Levine and staff. Housiel Levine is the group that we hired to do the South River Street Corridor Plan, and they are hosting a pop-up house, pop-up open house event at the Batavia Farmers Market on August 23. You can find a copy of the current public draft and additional information on our website. The EV charger at the high school installation is underway. Ashton Ridge paving of McKee and Van Nordwick will be completed in time for the start of HC Storm School. Close one, but it'll be finished tomorrow, and you'll see notifications of that. The wastewater treatment plant had a successful transition in switching equipment over this week from the old systems to the new systems and continues in the coming weeks, and there is a tentative 95% completion toward the end of October, which is significantly ahead of schedule on that incredibly complex project. So we're really happy with where things are at on that. Departments are working on their capital improvements project budgets, and I plan to have a presentation for City Council at the next committee of the whole meeting that is just an overview of the city's budget process and just a preview of some of the just financial and- just financial environment that we think exists this year, things to start thinking about as we approach this budget season. And then the last thing I wanted to mention, unfortunately Alderman Vogel-Sinker could not be here, but she did have a few constituents reach out to her who heard the couple that spoke at our last meeting about the difficulties that they had with contractors, and it just so happens that one of the people who reached out to her had a similar experience with the same contractor that this couple had the terrible experience with. So Alderman Vogel-Sinker asked if there would be, and since she's not here, are there three Aldermen who would like to put this on a future committee of the whole meeting just for discussion?
I would support that.
One, two, three. Perfect, okay. We'll get that on a committee of the whole meeting in the near future.
What is the discussion going to be about?
It is going to be about whether or not the city should establish a contractor registration list.
Could I make a suggestion, rather than whether, phrasing it as whether or not, maybe perhaps we can frame it as how can the city best address wayward contractors, if at all? Right? Because that way we can, it sort of opens up our possibilities a little bit.
And definitely make sure that we have at least what we got sent out earlier last week, I think, and then any discussions that we had the last time this came before the city council, so that we have that to reference from, because that actually had a proposed ordinance in it.
Already sent out?
That was sent out, but I don't know if there was any other discussion prior to, I thought that was.
I'll follow up with what was, it was discussed on two meeting dates.
Okay.
Right, just so we kind of.
That way we can read through it and get an idea of what we went through.
Yeah, I kind of agree. I'd like to maybe even have staff or legal, legal and staff come up with some ideas, give us some direction so that, you know, because really it comes down to a legal thing.
It's really a private cause of action here.
Right.
You know, they, like, we're not going to discuss it now. It's a private cause, it's a private cause of action that these residents should.
I would suggest that we do have the city attorney present for that.
Yes.
Definitely should be there.
I just don't know how so many other towns have it. So there's got to be, there's something going on there.
Yeah, and that was my ask, is it, as part of the agenda item, if we could just say, look, here's how other towns are addressing this issue, so we're not trying to reinvent it from scratch.
Included in what we sent out, there's a whole table, and there's about 30 different municipalities that were surveyed.
Yep. Okay. Laura?
Yeah, I just want to kind of clarify what Laura just said. Tomorrow is the last day we're going to have any obstructions on Van Nordrick by Storm School, is that what I'm understanding?
Yes.
We're going to take, we're going to take the signs down or move them off to the side or what do we?
I look like a person who's been up today, so we're coordinating with Lori right now to get information out to the public, and the rain did not help with the striping. So there will be intermittent closures, because there's still houses that will be built along McKee and Van Nordwick where sidewalks may have to go in and such like that, so those will be under flagger operations if we need that in at some point in the future. We'll also be installing rapid flashing beacons on both Wilson and McKee. I don't know the street names off the top of my head, but they're both the furthest to the west, crossing both of those intersections to allow the kids to get to and from the high school and HC Storm.
This one gets some degree of intensity surrounding it, because apparently we've got four or five kids that now go to HC Storm School whose grandparents either take them or pick them up at school. And some of the grandparents have talked to me, and they're kind of afraid that they're going to get over there and not be able to get near the school, and they have this annual place where the kids come and pick them up, and they pick up the kids and all this other stuff. So I know there's somewhat of a heightened degree of sensitivity by some of the folks, and when we had it all shut down, and I certainly tried to defend this, because there was a lot of work to do there between what Pulte was doing and what you guys were doing, it was a lot to be done. And I think you've worked very hard to get it up to the degree that we're going to be able to open this up, but just, so if you can kind of pass the word around to your staff tomorrow, if there's, or whenever we're, is this tomorrow when this starts?
Drop them off at Maple or at North Avenue and Republic, they got a sidewalk to walk on.
Right, yeah. I mean, I think there is, I'm just saying that I think there could be some that are going to, you know, be up there wanting to get as close as they can to it, so just if your staff can kind of work with them a little bit, I think it's all going to be fine, but there has been a degree because of all the work that was really going on there. I mean, and not only you guys, but then the school did a whole bunch of stuff to storm and had that.
We've been in constant contact with Mark Anderson, who is in charge of transportation for the school district, and he works with the buses and the school themselves, as well as Pulte, so we will kind of watch the next few days and see what adjustments need to be made.
That's all I wanted to do, was ask you to watch the next few days, because there's, the school bus thing is one thing, now this grandparent transportation system that we have in Batavia that's kind of made up family by family, I just, there's a sensitivity there.
It'll probably be a fluid thing over this next year as houses fill in on that north side and see where they'll be able to go and adjust.
Right, it's working, looks real good to me how everything is being put together and how we've fitted it right in with, you know, Winding Creek and everything else that's going through there. That's going to be a very nice area, but I mean, it's just getting it to the final moments here when we've kind of got it so that now you're, maybe when we're not 100% done, but we got to start dropping the kids off, I guess that's.
Maybe we'll have to do some type of PSA and work with the high school to let the students that attend there know there's still ongoing construction and what to be aware of.
Yeah, I don't think the high school you have to worry about those.
No, I meant, we, for BEC, Alex had brought a high school student that made the video. We may be able to use one of those students to help us prepare a video.
It's the Van Nordrick area and the streets there, that the Bain Lane and Furnace Drive and Houston Street, which are all part of that new subdivision, that's the ones that I think people think they're going to stumble onto, or, and I said, I think the school, our staff is working diligently to have all the sidewalks in, and, you know, we had the little situation with Mason's Lodge, and now we got that resolved and got that sidewalk in that was not there. So I appreciate everything that you've done, it's been a really first-class job.
Yeah, you know, this is literally my backyard, right? So first off, many of the residents in the area are worried about the grass. The signs have killed the grass in my yard and my neighbor's yard down Van Nordwick, and the patch on the median from March has not yet been resettled or repaired, and so I'm hoping that's part of what's coming up. The second thing, being the parking lot for HC Storm, I do know that a police presence day one makes a big difference. The no parking sign begins at my driveway, you know, you can fit two cars between my driveway and the no parking sign. Having the police chief was there first day last year, traffic flowed, traffic went great. Police weren't there the second day, traffic was backed up, people were pulling out in front of each other, it caused a challenge. So I would encourage, if we can reach out to the police department, to have somebody present during drop-off that'll help the grandparents navigate that period. And I can also tell you, from the neighborhood, not only do we have Van Nordwick shut down, also further back, kind of in the Carriage Crest area, I'm more excited. I think Third Ward is excited to have some of this stuff done, so thank you for getting it done.
I bring up having them walk down the new sidewalk. You drop them off three blocks away from school and there's no congestion. Get them to walk.
I wanted to ask a question about the Third Ward, since that's what we're talking about right now. The Carriage Crest Stormwater Basin, I had residents ask about the water that's standing in the basin, so I was wondering if Andrea, you could speak to that, if that water is going to be stagnant there, or if the pump hasn't started working yet, what's the status on that?
I have not, is this recent water that's standing or?
No, it's been there for the summer, since it's started raining, it's been stagnant about a foot.
I will have to go and look at it. It is not all intended to drain, there are under drains in there that are supposed to pull some of that if it's not groundwater, but we'll have to look and see. There's a certain level that triggers the pump to go on, and some of it should be able to evaporate and also be pulled down with the roots, but we can check, we're still in the maintenance period of this pond, I want to make sure that it's working.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any others? I have one. Do we know the, any of the timeline on the conversion of Arby's out there, when that's supposed to reopen? Do we know?
Conversion of what?
The Arby's.
Here's the answer from Wikipedia.
Nice.
Jeff?
Yeah, when?
Not yet, I know that they're in progress with their build-out.
Okay.
We have not got an opening day yet.
Okay.
Well, a follow-up into progress, because I have a question as well. The old 7-Eleven, they came in and they were very excited to get that thing going, wanted to buy the whole building. Did they fall through?
No, they contacted us and said for several months that they were dealing with a family emergency, and that delayed their build-out, but they came back and were asking us many questions last week to get the ball rolling and get things going again.
Very good, that's good news.
Another thing I'd like to just throw on the table for everybody is that a vacation, the city staff, development department, and myself had a really nice meeting, I guess it was last Wednesday, with the new owners of Berkeley's, I'll call it, that's.
Cinco de Mayo.
Cinco de Mayo, but it's the one and the same, but nice, nice people, and they wanted to come in and get themselves going, and the one problem that I was advised by Laura and the city attorney was, is that they can't sell liquor in there until they get a city license, and we cannot give them a city license till they go through the state of Illinois and get a state liquor license, because that's where all the investigation and backgrounds and everything is done. And so they seem to think it was going to go pretty quick, because I believe they maybe already have a license in Aurora, so that's not like they haven't been investigated before. But I'm afraid, given the context of how things are operating in the state of Illinois right now, it's probably a little bit slowed down in that whole process. So I told them last Thursday that they could open, but you cannot sell liquor till we are sure that, because there's dram shop insurance issues and there's all this other stuff that's going on. They were most understanding. This is a, I'll call it an elderly gentleman that owns it, and he has a son, and then there's three children under the son who are all adults, two girls and a boy, and I think they're going to be the ones that are going to run Berkeley's up there to a large degree, but they've got some nice ideas. One of the best things I heard from them was, is that they're going to keep the delicatessen that's been in there now and has become very popular with a lot of people. That's coming, that's coming back, that's going to be there, and the guy that has been running it went on a trip for a few weeks, and he's coming back, but he left his assistant in charge with all the formulas and recipes and everything, so that's there. But I think the more interesting thing is, they're going to bring their own bakery into this place, and they're going to be able to customize, make you, you know, birthday cakes and anniversary cakes and all this other good stuff, along with any other specialty things you want done at the bakery. And they talked to us about, right when you come in the door there, there's an open space, and they, for a while, Berkeley's had it with some tables sitting in there, and you went and bought a sandwich at the deli, and then you could go over to that space and eat your sandwich. So they're talking about kind of rebuilding that space and making it into an ice cream cone stop, where people could go in and buy their children or grandchildren ice cream cones, and it would be right inside the door, and they've got some specialty ice cream that they will be bringing in and using. So I think there's going to be some very popular things coming in there, and I know they opened up, what was it, last Saturday morning at nine o'clock, and I went up about, you know, 11:30, and they were very pleased with the size of the crowd they had had in there already, and I bought myself a couple of things from the delicatessen, and it was as good as it had been previously, so I think we're on the right track there and we're going to go forward. I know there's a lot of people on the east side that really are reliant on that store because they don't want to go out and get involved in traffic on Randall Road and everything else, and they just like the store, and so I think we may have won that over. Then we've got another deal going where Warehouse 55 is now going to move into the corner of First and Water Street, where the former Candle Company was for a brief period of time. Jeff, do you know any more about that?
Not yet, I don't know, they've been working with Anthony, they have a little bit more, but I don't know.
I know they're taking all the space and.
Yeah, they're taking all the space.
All the hearth and hammer space, the loading dock, and then there's another space behind that that they're going to be taking over, and I think they're targeting October, mid-October point.
I mean, the former owner who's now there complained to me that her big problem was there wasn't enough parking, so I don't know, I guess they've reconstructed or reassigned parts of that, because Batavia Enterprises owns it, they're in the middle of the whole conversation, so we'll see where that all goes. But I've had people from Aurora moaning to me about that coming up to Batavia, because apparently that's been somewhat of a popular store in Aurora, but they think that Batavia Tri-Cities is much more antique, I think was the word, inclined than what you have in downtown Aurora, so they thought that that was going to be a good place to bring themselves up to. So we've got quite a few, we've got some stuff leaving, but we got some nice stuff moving in, so I'm pleased by what we seem to be having coming in.
Okay, does anybody else have any others? If not, motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.